The date is Monday, December 7th, in this Council chambers and the time is seven o'clock. And tonight we'll be discussing the status of the '09-10 budget program and its impact on the development of the 10-11 budget year. Solicitation of comments from the public relating to the general goals and objectives of the budget for the ensuing year and other matters of interest and concern. So I guess I will hand it over to the man who has put all these numbers together, Mr. Stephen Alfred. Steve?
Okay, in getting started tonight, first, for anybody that's in the audience, there are handouts at the table. One is the PowerPoint presentation from the town manager's office. The second is a PowerPoint presentation from the school department. There's also a single sheet there that is a component of the PowerPoint presentation that was not included with the sheets that were copied. The entire PowerPoint presentation from both the town and the school will be placed on the town's website tomorrow morning. That way, anyone interested at home that is listening to the session on the rebroadcast will be able to download the data rather than having to see it on the overhead display, since those numbers are going to be somewhat fuzzy to be able to see. So for those that will be watching on a rebroadcast, before you do the broadcast, attempt to get copies of the document, download that or be able to follow along with the presentation. Tonight's meeting has several goals. One is to provide general information relative to the budget adoption process. This becomes somewhat of a more mundane task since the charter revisions are now several years old and we've gone through the process on two occasions. Second is to provide documentation relative to the base budget as well as to look at a consensus on starting points. This is to review property tax rate and levy projections, to look at other cost factors or new projects that may be under consideration, as well as contractual obligations for both the municipal and school functions. This is also a very important session to solicit comments from the public relative to the general goals or objectives of the budget for the ensuing year. And also to provide information on those services that they feel are not necessary or those services that they feel are not being provided in sufficient degree to satisfy community need. The budget development process, as I just noted, was revised as of November 7th, 2006 with the adoption of amendments to the town charter. This meeting was published in the November 27th, 2009 edition of the Narragansett Times for formal notice in accordance with charter provisions. The detail relative to the meeting schedule is available on the Town of South Kingstown's website, www.southkingstownri, all one word, dot com. It's also available in the libraries and at Town Hall. The budget adoption process and the schedule is included in the PowerPoint presentation. Essentially, what the budget process requires is that prior to January 15th of each year, that a public informational hearing, that which we are conducting this evening, be held to provide general base information and to provide opportunity for the public to comment on how the budget should look or things that they are concerned within the budget before the actual budget development begins. The budget development process includes the school committee being required to submit to the town manager's office by February 14th of each year, a school committee recommended budget. That recommended budget is submitted to the manager for an opportunity for his review for incorporation of the property tax transfer into the general fund, which provides the property tax support for the school fund for the ensuing year. The town manager's budget must be provided to the council no later than March 1st. The council then reviews that budget over the month of March and on to before March 22nd adopts a preliminary budget. That preliminary budget is then submitted to public informational hearings where both the town budget and the school budget are considered at each public hearing. The council is then in a position to be able to adopt a final budget prior to April 30th. During that period between the time that the preliminary budget is adopted by the council in late March and the final budget is adopted, qualified electors with 25 signatures have an opportunity to submit petitions to the council, which the council will have to vote on individually. Those requests can ask to increase budget items, decrease budget items, request new services. The council is not bound to provide for support or rejection of any of the budget referendum questions that are presented, but must vote individually on each of the proposals if they indeed have the 25 signatures from qualified electors. Once the council adopts the final budget after voting on each of the various petitions that had been submitted, the public then has an opportunity with the use of 200 signatures to be able to petition to amend the town council's adopted budget through an all-day The qualified electors would have to submit that petition to the town clerk's office no later than, I believe the date is on to before May 12th. The minimum amount that can be reduced or added to the budget must be in an amount larger than $200,000?
$200,000.
If there is no petition submitted to go to an all-day referendum, the budget as adopted by the council stands as the budget for the ensuing year. If there is an all-day referendum, it will be conducted on the first Tuesday following the first Saturday in June. Based on the vote of the qualified electors at that all-day referendum, the budget would either stand as presented by the council or as amended by the questions that have been posed in the referendum. That is the budget process that we are initiating tonight and beginning the process for the 2010-2011 budget year. Just a few points of interest. One is that all municipal budgets are now created in accordance with Senate Bill 3050, which was passed in the 2006 session of the General Assembly. This means that the, this is the so-called property tax levy cap. This provides that for the 2010-2011 year, property tax levies cannot increase by more than 4.5% over what the prior year's tax levy was. In South Kingstown's case, the tax levy for the 2009-2010 year was $64,504,174. Factored by 4.5%, that would bring us to a total of $67,406,000 and change, or about $2.9 million increase. I'll make it clear that based on the economic times that we are in, the 3050 legislation will have little impact, similar as it did not have any impact at all, on the development of the 2009-2010 year budget. Property tax caps at this point are on the books, but they are not part of the budget process. We do not anticipate recommending anywhere close to a levy increase that would come close to the 4.5% maximum that's allowed by legislation. One other, a few other points as far as 3050 is concerned, the cap is not just on the levy, it also provides restrictions to the school committee, where the school committee cannot ask for more than 4.5%. Knowing our school committee, they certainly won't ask for anywhere close to 4.5%. Moving along, because I want to provide the public with a broader opportunity to be able to bring questions forward, just in terms of some baseline information. Growth in the property tax levy over the last five years has shown an increase. Last year, it went up 1.2%. Prior to that, it had been at the state cap of 5% and in 2007, 2008, it was at 5.2%. So we have turned the corner as far as levy increases with the, which really coincides with the economic downturn that the community has faced over the past two years. In the development of a pro forma budget, we have drafted an expenditure statement that shows no increase in the 2009-2010 service levels. I want to make it clear, the pro forma budget is a planning document, it is not a budget document. The difference is that it is based on best estimates as to where programs will go in advance of department directors submitting budgets documenting need. What we have done is to provide broad guidelines to each of the department directors on how they must scope the budget. We've indicated that there can be no service increases. We've indicated that there are potential reductions in both full and part-time staff requirements. At this point, approximately 68% of every dollar we spend on the municipal budget goes to personnel-related expenses, whether that be salary, wages, or fringe benefits. Therefore, if we talk about providing a base level of service, we are most likely going to be looking at having to look at potential cutbacks in the number of employees that are providing services today. That is brought home by the fact that we are factoring in a 2.25% salary increase plus the applicable step increases for municipal employees. This is based on the labor contracts that have been entered into for the 2010-2011 year. It's important to point out that for the '09-10 year, the current year that we're in, no salary increases were provided for any municipal employees. So the 2.25% really effectively works out to a 1.13% increase over that two-year period. We're also anticipating a 5% increase in healthcare costs. I will also caution that at this point, we are looking at 5%. By the time we get to the month of February, we will have another three months of data as to experience that may require us to increase that estimate. Hopefully, that's not the case, but again, the pro forma provides a 5% increase estimate, which is best estimate at this time, but all of those dollars, dollar amounts will be refined as we go forward. We're also looking at about a 5.3% decrease in the costs associated with municipal retirement, and I'll get into that later on in this presentation. We're also budgeting for municipal and school debt service costs that are approximately 6.4% below what the current year are. Reductions amount to approximately $190,000, it's anticipated. This is the product of actions taken over the past two years that the council has with capital improvement program and in terms of deferring additional borrowing for the community as a means of reducing the proportionate share of debt service. Debt service now is making up about 6.4% of the municipal general fund. We certainly want to keep that in that range, if not at a lower dollar amount, yet at the same time recognize that there are capital projects that will need to be accomplished as a means of planning for our future. At this time, the capital budget that was released to the council as of December 1st shows a $30,000 increase over what the base level funding levels are. I expect that that will be reduced prior to the manager's budget being released in March. We are also not supporting in the pro forma budget any increase in the property tax transfer to the school funds. Let me also indicate that based on actions that may occur in the future involving state revenues, there may in fact be a need to look at reductions in what the level of support is for the school department. We'll get into the general aid to cities and towns later in the presentation, but suffice it to say that over a two-year period, the municipality's lost about $1.5 million, or about 47% of its funding level. With 70% of the school budget being resident within the general fund, for us to be able to continue to absorb the reductions in state aid to municipalities, it becomes literally impossible to be able to maintain service levels if we do not begin to look more broadly at the overall municipal school budget as the municipal budget document and look at the revenue sources that are available to both sources. The pro forma, in terms of the revenue development relevant, the revenue statement summary, we're anticipating at this point $494,000 lost in state aid. This is looking at what is assumed to be the loss of fourth quarter payment on motor vehicle excise tax reimbursement from the state, and we're not sure that even during the current year, the '09-10 year, that that number will stay. And we'll talk about the state budget in a couple of minutes as well. I'm also anticipating the need to reduce funding support from undesignated fund balance from $1.2 million down to $1 million, since the budgets that are being developed are drawing more dollars from undesignated funds than has been our past practice. It's a policy decision that we'll have to talk about once the budget document is before the council. I've also presented the pro forma with no ratable change in the tax roll. Let's be clear, this is a revaluation year and revaluation will have a substantial impact on what the tax rate, not the tax levy, but what the tax rate will be within the community. So here on the next page is the pro forma budget. The pro forma budget that we're looking at, I think it's important to note that in the current year, the '09-10 year, we already saw a 1.07% reduction from what the '08-09 year was. So when we look at the pro forma for 10-11, what we're really talking about doing is maintaining budget levels over a three-year period, probably within $50,000 of that three-year average. If the budget were based on the predictions that were made at the time that the pro forma was developed, we'd be looking at municipal programming going up about 1.37% and school program, which is simply the transfer to the school fund and their debt service, going down by about a half a point. Most of that is associated with the $264,000 reduction in debt service associated with the school department. Even with a flat budget amount projected for the 2010-2011 year, we're looking at a need for approximately $650,000 or 1% more in property tax support, if that pro forma were funded based on the assumptions that I've already placed on the table. That is directly associated with about a $612,000 loss principally through the state revenue sources. I would note that the state revenue we're showing at 494, that assumes that we still are going to receive three quarters of the motor vehicles in the 10-11 year. If that assumption is not accurate, for every quarter payment that's taken away, the town will lose approximately $500,000. So there is, when we put the budget together, an expenditure statement nowadays is easier to be able to forecast than the revenue statement. The uncertainty with the revenue statement, based on some of the local revenues as well as the state revenues, creates real concern in how closely the pro forma budget will reflect a March 1 budget once it's put out. The second page on the pro forma shows the revenue statement, and again, we're looking at non-property tax revenue, which is inclusive of the state aid reductions and the undesignated funds, showing us how that $612,000 would be forecast for lost revenue and while there's no real budgetary increase on the expenditure side, about a 1% increase in property taxes. The next page shows how we calculate the tax rate. Now, this is an important consideration in the 10-11 year. In the 10-11 year, as noted here, we're looking at approximately a $73.5 million budget. Net of the non-property tax revenues, we would need $63.8 million. Of that $63.8 million, we then have to add in the overlay. The overlay is the amount of taxes that we have to levy in excessive need to be able to reflect those taxes levied that are not collected in the first year and which they do. In other words, they become a prior year tax that they collected. When we get done with that, we need $65,170,000 based on the pro forma's presentation. Of that amount, $51 million would go to the schools and $14 million would go to the municipality. Net of the motor vehicle taxes, and again, I've left the motor vehicle taxes untouched as if they would stay with the $6,000 exemption per vehicle. We're looking at collection from the flexible property tax roll, that being commercial, residential, industrial, and tangible base of $63.3 million. I've shown that using the existing tax roll, the $5,182 million. If that were the case and this budget was adopted tonight, it would mean that you'd be looking at, if all things were equal, about a 13, and it's really probably close to 13 to 15% tax rate increase to provide that 1% increase. That's not what's going to occur. When we look at the property tax roll, which is presented on the next page, you can see that, just as I had shown, we have a flexible tax base under the first column of $5,182 million. And you can see that 84% of our taxes come from the residential base. Commercial provides about 11.8% and the remainder out of the industrial and utilities. But what we're looking at is that for property tax purposes, in our community, we've got 84% coming out of the residential base, or about $54.3 million of the total 62.8. Next year, if Narragansett's revaluation provides us with an ability to estimate what will occur in South Kingstown, we can project approximately a 10% loss in the value of taxable property. So that means that what had been at the $5,182 million will decrease by $520 million. And we will have a taxable roll of $4,663 million. If you look at the bottom box on this sheet, you'll see that the average house assessment in South Kingstown in the '09-10 year was $421,521. With a tax rate of $12.09, it meant that the tax bill would have been $5,096. If you had a 10% reduction on that average house value, it went down to $379,000. You would have the same, you would have a tax rate of $13.43 necessary to be able to produce the same $5,096. So essentially, if the revale had occurred in the current year, the '09-10 year, we would have had a tax rate with the tax levy that was there for the '09-10 year of $13.43. So you will be looking at that type of an increase, even if you were standing still with no change, with that type of a change in the tax roll. The rate will go up, but the levy would remain the same at $13.43. Many times people ask me on the tax roll, why, what's the exemptions, who gets exemptions? The exemptions are for, for the most part, veteran-associated exemptions, whether it's veterans exemptions, which are worth about $100,000, or Gold Star parents, blind, XPOW, all of those different amount up to the $12.3 million that's shown there. So those exemptions aren't going to change substantially as far as, the yield value won't change, but the 10% will change as far as there would be a 10% reduction in the value if the overall roll were to decrease. But the message I want to make clear is that were the 2009-2010 role, role based on the revaluation that we would predict will occur this year, that the rate to produce the same tax levy would have been at $13.43 rather than the $12.09 or a dollar and 34 cents The next page on the handout shows the, what the budget would be if in fact the pro forma budget were adopted as is. It shows that the rate would be $13.58. That's the approximate 15% increase associated with the 1% tax levy increase, as well as being able to reconcile the half a billion dollar loss in the taxable property. But again, make it clear that the levy at $13.43 would generate the same tax bill to the average home as the existing roll provides for at $12.09. But that will be a psychological issue. As we go forward with people expressing concern, that we're looking at the potential of over a 12% tax rate increase, even though it would be a levy increase of only 1%. Couple of data sheets that we think is important. General fund growth over the past few years. You can see that five years ago, we were averaging 6.8% in terms of growth. 6.2 went down to 4.5, down to 3.9, and down to a negative 1.1. We assume that until this recession is over, we will continue to see growth to be very restricted in both the general fund and the school fund. Ten-year history, looking at the property tax levy. Annual growth has been over 5.7%. On the school side, it's been going up on average of 6.1%. On the muni side, about 4.2. School expenditures are up over the 10-year term about 6.7%. And again, I don't think that these are as informative as they have been in past years, because we're dealing with a separate set of financial terms and conditions that must be met that were not there during strong economic times. Property tax transfers to the school fund has averaged about 6.7% over that 10-year term, but you can see that it's been flatlined for both the '08-09 and '09-10 year. Should the 10-11 year continue at the $47,909,000 transfer amount, it would be the third year that the property tax support would remain at level funding. I mentioned state aid to general fund. The next chart shows really a three-year summary of where we've been and where we are predicting that we will go as far as the, both the current year and the pro forma year of 2011. When we prepared the 2010 budget, we underestimated what the state was predicting at that time that they would provide. We were under what the state budget that was adopted in late June said that the town would receive. At this point, we're anticipating that the estimate will be about $954,000 below what we received in the 2009 year. And when you come across for, I'm presenting the state aid revenues in three different boxes. One is general state aid, which is really money that comes from sales and income tax. The second is monies that are reimbursing the community based on state The second is monies that are reimbursing the community based on state commitments to reimburse on school housing and to reimburse on library building construction. So what we have to do is to spend the money in debt service to be entitled to receive those reimbursement dollars. And I'm also presenting in the third component, the monies that we call pass-through aid. Pass-through aid are not dollars collected through either income and sales tax, or rather through special taxation. One is for the public service corporation. That's what the utilities, the AT&amp;T, the Cox Communication, what they pay for having tax-exempt status within the community. That is not, the state collects that as a state tax and then distributes it back to the communities on a per capita basis. The meals tax is a tax that is collected by each of our restaurants, paid, paid to the state, and the state then redistributes that money to the community in which the dollars were, were generated. The same holds through with the hotel tax. There should not be any tampering by the state with either the public service corporation tax, the meals tax, or the hotel tax, because those are separate from the tax base that they use for general aid. The general aid is the income tax that our residents pay and the sales tax that our residents pay, collected by the state and a portion of which is distributed back to the community as well as to the school districts. But if we look just at the general state aid and you look at the projection that we would have $1.78 million in the performer budget, and that projection includes three-quarters of the motor vehicle excise tax reimbursement, not half, but three-quarters. We're looking at the difference between the 2008 year and the 2011 year, or really a two-year period, two full-year periods, where we would lose about $1.57 million. And that's being absorbed on the municipal budget. How the state believes that the reductions in the aid will not generate demands for additional property tax levy can't be explained. Moving forward, debt service. This is the debt service based on the capital budget that's been submitted, and as I noted earlier, we're expecting that for the 2010, 2011 year, there'll be $189,000 less need than there was in the current year. A great deal of that savings is based on us restructuring the debt payments based on the debt that was refinanced in November. And you have Mr. Lord to thank for revising the schedules accordingly to be able to provide some relief in the 10-11 year. We're looking at the overall impact of municipal debt as being about a 54 cents tax rate forecast. Again, and that's before we have the revale. Capital budget, we'll discuss that in January. At this point, the, the, the school's capital budget is, been brought in at the same dollar amount as it was in the current year. General fund, as I mentioned, is up about $30,000, but that is certainly going to be revisited before the March 1st manager's budget is released to the council. One of the other things, the capital improvement program, the capital budget is the first year of the capital improvement program, which is a six-year period. When we look at the six-year period, we're recommending additional revisions downward in terms of the size of that overall program. This is both on the municipal projects as well as on school projects. We're looking at an overall reduction of another $600,000 from what had been forecast and adopted in the 2009, 2010 year. Moving on, I provided you here with base information on the retirement systems. The, there's three retirement systems within the general fund, the police EMS, which is our emergency medical services, and municipal employees. The rates will be going up on the police from 12.24 to 12.6. They will be going down from 6.08 to 3.28 on the EMS. And the municipal employees that don't fit into either the police or the EMS will go from a 6.92% down to 6.2. My initial forecast is that that would save us approximately $39,000 based on those reductions in rates. I've also included here what the state share will be and the local share will be on the teachers. The forecast at this point is that the 14.17% that the schools are paying right now on teacher retirement will decrease to 11.89% in the 10-11 year. I do not have a financial as to what that would mean, but that will provide the school department with some relief as far as the expenditure statement's concerned. Moving on, one of the major questions that continues to be asked of our office is, where does the town of South Kingston stand with its retirement system and what is the unfunded liability that's associated with it? I think that a great deal of press has been given to those communities that are not resident to the state employee's retirement system. South Kingston has been a member of the retirement system, I believe, back to the early 1960s or even the 1950s. At this point, the unfunded liability for all three funds is $174,000. We are 99.73% funded. Now, when you hear of municipal retirement pension systems being out of control with unfunded liabilities that communities will have to meet, most of those are directly associated with those municipalities that have private retirement systems and are not legislatively required to make the annual contribution that is necessary to fund both current and, and past liability. Communities that I've got 40, 50, or 60% funding are with the private systems. The town of South Kingston's retirement systems are in superb condition. This is as of June 30th of 2008. With the market reductions that occurred in the fall of 2008 and early 2009, we would assume that we will see a reduction in the 99.7% funding level. But at this point, I do not believe that the funding ratio should really fall below 90% at this point, Al.
Yeah, I wouldn't anticipate that, and a lot of it has come back since, since the end of June.
But I think this is a key point so that people do not think that we are continuing to underfund retirement. We are meeting what our liability and exposure is on retirement as well as other post-employment benefits. We're one of the few communities at this point that's meeting both future and past liability requirements for OPEB. Does this cost money? Yes, it does. Is it the proper thing to do? Yes, it is. What we're doing is making sure that our budgets for today reflect what the needs will be for, for future payouts for those individuals that have been promised benefits through the labor contracts. The, the next sheet that, that I've provided is, again, baseline data to show where we stand with labor contracts. As I noted earlier, the 2009, 2010 year across the board is a zero salary increase that was budgeted and what was negotiated. I have one remaining open contract. The 2010, 11, and 2011, 12 years, we have three contracts in place, plus the unorganized, which would follow suit at 2.25% salary increases for those, those two ensuing years. As far as co-pay is concerned, we're also documenting that by the time we close the 2011, 2012 year, we will have all labor contracts exclusive of the one that hasn't been completed at this point at 15% co-pay levels. We've also cut back on the health, the healthcare in retirement for Council 94, which up till employment on July 1st of 2005 was coverage up till age 65 at the municipal, at municipal cost. Anyone hired after July 1st of 2005 is entitled now to a stipend over a three-year period only. So we're continuing to try to minimize what the post-employment cost will be for the, for the community on the labor contracts that, that we negotiate. Next item for full disclosure purposes is the, the single handout sheet that I had, which is on the general fund, undesignedated fund balance. Questions have been asked on why don't we use more of that money during bad economic times. Clearly, this shows that as of June 30th of 2008, we had approximately $9.95 million in undesignedated funds. It was about 13.4% of our 2008, 2009 budget. For the 2008, 2009 year, we used another $1.2 million to finance the '08, '09 year. That took the undesignedated fund balance down to $9.3 million or $12.7. For the 2009, 2010 year, we've also using an additional $1.2 million. We're forecasting about a $300,000 surplus. That's a placeholder. It would mean that when the audit is completed for the 9-10 year, the year that we're currently in, undesignedated funds would be down to about 11.5%. If you follow that analysis down for one additional year, it would take us down to having undesignedated funds equal to approximately 10% of what would be the forecasted budget for the 11, 12 year. This creates concern to us from a budget management perspective because eroding the fund balance is something that will be looked at by outside sources, particularly Moody's or Investment Service, in terms of us spending more dollars than we're actually taking in. So yes, undesignedated funds can be of assistance during hard economic times, but they cannot become a base revenue because it would be unsustainable. We are looking at, in the 10-11 estimate, as I'd mentioned earlier, forecasting about $1 million rather than $1.2 million in that performer revenue statement. But that'll still get us down to about a 10% level if all things are equal based on the projections that are made. Just a couple of data sheets that are in the packet. This shows the State of Rhode Island's general fund budgets based on the distribution between education and municipal budget. I've highlighted the South Kingston, and you can see that we're number 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6. Number seven as far as the percent of our, our budget. Our $86 million is the sum total of the general fund and the school fund with unduplicated dollars. In other words, the $47,909,000 that's in the general fund isn't double counted. So this is the net amount of the general fund and the school fund totals $86.2 million. Of that $86.2 million, 59.8 or 69.5% goes to education. There's six communities that have a higher distribution than South Kingston, and obviously there's quite a few communities below. The state average is about a 56.7% distribution for education, 43% for, for muni. So we are considerably over that. Straight numbers really don't tell a true story. I put this in here so that I could also explain that if we were comparing apples to apples with all of the different cities and towns, this would be an important sheet to look at. But since South Kingston does not have a paid fire department, then the distribution for many of the communities that are listed here as having a higher percentage going to municipal service, it, it would be reflected in that manner. If there's urban areas with larger police departments than what we have for same population, you'd see the same. But since this is a number that sometimes gets referred to, to document overreliance on the, on, or the schools having an overreliance on the over municipal budget, I think it's important to present it, but also to qualify it, that one would have to determine whether demographics and service levels in other communities are the same as South Kingston. In addition to not having fire service, many of the municipalities with a lower municipal share are also providing trash collection, which is an expensive proposition would be out of that property tax. So yes, this information's available at the Department of Administration Municipal Affairs website, but I, I want to qualify it so that we keep the discussions on a level playing field. The, the next data sheet that I'm presenting to you, I think it's an important one because I want to make sure that people understand that full value of taxable value on a per capita basis is one of the key considerations when the state begins talking about a, a new education aid formula. And when you look at where we stand, the state's average per capita, and this goes back to 2006, so there's going to be a lot of shifts in that based on formula concerns. But if one of the things that a formula is going to look at is what is the capacity of a tax base to be able to generate property taxes to pay for education versus those communities that have limited tax bases and cannot therefore pay for education, is what the value per capita presentation is. As you can see, in 2006, they were forecasting that on a full value basis, that we were at $203,000 of assessment value per person in, in the community. And again, that's using a 2,000 population. But when you look at the state averages, the state average is, is at about $147,000. What that suggests to me is that when people start looking at formulas, communities like a South Kingston will be looked at as a much stronger community, able to provide greater local support for its education. So I want to make sure people understand that these are some of the components that are used in evaluating education aid formulas. An education aid formula, for the most part, would set up a base rate of how many tax dollars should come for each student, and then make adjustments there, too. But a major portion of the adjustment is based on the wealth of the community, and a great deal of that measure of the wealth of the community is going to be based on the size of the assessment value within the community itself. So again, these are just data sheets, but this meeting is supposed to be a first meeting to be able to provide raw data or data that can be used for people to make better decisions as far as where we stand. The next sheet that I've prepared for you is to show you what the unemployment rate is in South Kingston. Not the State of Rhode Island, but in South Kingston. At the state level, we're looking at about 73,000 people that are unemployed in South Kingston. We're looking at, as of September, and that's the most recent numbers as of this morning, about a 9.4% unemployment rate. You can see that that's down from 9.6 in August and down from 10.4 in July, which was really the highest level that we had seen. But when we look at the average for the 2008 year, the average for 2008 was down at 6.6% and the average for 2007 was 4.4, and for 2006 was as low as 4.3. So we're really double what the average unemployment rate would be during proper economic time. That means that there's a great deal of pressure on a number of our taxpayers to be able to meet the, the need for additional property tax effort on the, the part of the town, as well as just to meet their overall bills. I would also represent to you that when you look at the number of employees in the labor force from the 2006 year, you see it was over 16,000 people. It's now down to 15,006. We haven't lost population. What we most likely are seeing is a reduction in the labor force based on people that are either underemployed, not collecting unemployment, or have exhausted unemployment benefits. So the rate at the 9.4%, well, well below the state average of 13, is still of great concern in terms of our ability, our community's ability to be able to afford property tax increases or to even to afford existing property increases or even to afford existing property tax requirements. Where do we go? One of the things I've said tonight is that the loss in state aid must be considered a loss for the entire municipal budget program. The school program now represents 70% of the general fund and also is responsible for 79% of the entire tax levy. Reductions in state revenues to the general fund will reduce the availability of property taxes to the school fund. There's no other way of looking at it other than looking at all of our revenues being town revenues that are either supporting education or supporting municipal side. The operating program cannot absorb the $1.2 to $1.5 million loss over a two-year period and still be able to provide full funding support to the school fund, which represents 70% of that budget. It creates an imbalance that if we do not look at what the aid is coming into the community and the property taxes being transferred to the school fund, will mean that there will have to be substantial reductions in the municipal program in terms of service levels. This is something that we will be working with the school department on, and hopefully we will have a proper solution and a recommendation that both the council and the school committee can work with come March 1st. The last page is really a summary of where money goes, and this goes back to the prior pages, that when we look at the general fund, as I said earlier, we got, for the current year, the '09, '10 years, $73.4, $75 million budget. 69, 70% of it's going to education in terms of the transfer of the, transfer of property tax and debt service. When we look at the general fund revenues, 86% of the general fund comes from property taxes, and only $10 million of 13, almost 14% comes from other income. If that other income is inclusive of the state aid and we're going to be seeing a million-dollar reduction in that line item, you can understand what type of impact the revenue statement then begins to have on the expenditure statement. When we look at the property tax levy, inclusive of the overlay, based on the sheets I've already shown you, 79.2% is going to education purposes of the tax levy. When we look at the municipal components, the capital budget and the debt service represent about 12.5% of the municipal budget. We're not going to be able to impact the debt service more than we already have with the $189,000 reduction. We can make some strides in terms of reductions on the capital improvement program. Outside of that, the remaining $19 million is where expenditure reductions will have to occur to be able to balance out the loss in the non-property tax revenues. The school component, again, is, most of theirs is going right into operations, only 6.7% is going to debt service. And again, when we look at the transfer on the state aid, when I look at the '10, '11 year on what's forecast at this point, and again, that forecast may be overly optimistic, we're looking at about a $1.1 million loss over that period. That's inclusive of the meals tax, the hotel tax, and the public service corporation tax. When you subtract those items out and you deal just with that's coming from the income and sales tax, the amount gets closer to $1.5 million. So, these are the conditions that we're dealing with. I'm not using it as a complaint, but rather as a statement of fact as to what we've got to work with to be able to produce the next budget document. The last thing I wanted to spend a couple of minutes with is so that the issue of the state budget is brought into greater focus. The state, at this point, based on the November revenue estimating conference, is estimating that their 2009, 2010 year budget will be $219 million in a deficit position without adjustment. That's made up of a $61.8 million operating deficit from the '08, '09 year plus estimated overspendings of $157 million. So, the estimates then go on in the 2010, 2011 year that if all things are as they were at the revenue estimating conference in November, the predicted shortfall of revenue to expenses would be up to $400 million. It then, in the out-years, climbs to as high as $600 million. Now, I think that it's fuzzy in the '09, '10 year, let alone the '10, '11 year. I'm not sure where you come up with the $600 million. The forecast that came out of that conference was slower personal income growth, slower job recovery, and slower wage and salary growth than what had been projected back in the spring when the last revenue estimating conference was held. When we, when Alan and I have looked at the state's documentation on forecasting for the '10, '11 year and the '11, '12 and '12, '13 year, one of the things that concerns us is that they have documented how many years it took in 1991, which was the last real recession that the state had, to be able to go from the number of jobs that were available in the state to recover those jobs. It took eight years. The forecast that's being used for the current recession is that the job recovery would occur in, I believe, four years. That estimate means that the income tax and sales tax in the out-years that they're forecasting may in fact be very optimistic in nature. So, when we look at where state revenues are going, both at the municipal and the school, because there's not much left that can come out of municipals once the monies are taken from the motor vehicle excise tax reimbursement. Once the federal stimulus dollars are gone, it will have impacts as well. The income and sales tax data, if in fact the jobs do not materialize over that four year for recovery, will also create more income problems for the state because they won't have the sales and income to be able to meet their needs. So, I think that when the next revenue estimating conference comes in, that estimate of 2019 could in fact be a low estimate, and the $400 million could be a low estimate. We also expect that the supplemental budget for the 2009, 2010 year, the governor's office has indicated it would be out before March 15th. His preliminary indications back in September was to take that quarter payment. Whether the supplemental that he comes forward with continues to support the removal of the fourth quarter or the entire program is yet to be seen. He does not make that final decision. It will be the general assembly. But our concerns are vested in how long it will take the general assembly to be able to address the supplemental budget. If past practice holds true, the supplemental budget can be submitted by the governor if it's not acted on for several months by the general assembly. We could be preparing a budget, both for the manager's budget on March 1st and the council's budget in April, without having real good estimates as to not only the '10, '11 year, but the '09, '10 year. The budget pro forma that we put together, and again, we're forecasting about a $780,000 surplus for the 2009, 2010 year. That surplus is based, and I mean, because the data's here, it's in the handout, that surplus is based on a direct requirement to take the municipal budget down, operating departments by 5% across the board. That's a $750,000 reduction if we direct it to occur. We've considered it within the pro forma. We haven't directed it at this point until we determine how much of that reduction's going to be necessary. So, of the 750, if we assume that departments would be allowed to spend based on the appropriation level that they received in the current year, we'd be forecasting approximately a $30,000 surplus for the '09, '10 year. And again, that's predicated on getting $1.5 million from the state, which could in fact be a million. So, we've got a number of things that are on the table that are income-associated that will have profound impact on the development of the '10, '11 year. So, that concludes the good news. I'd be glad to answer any questions the council, the school committee, or the public has on any of the data that I've presented. Again, the pro forma is a planning document. It is not a budget. As a planning document, it's based on a number of assumptions, many of which have been disclosed here, many of which are soft numbers at this time. That's what the intent of that pro forma is for this evening's presentation.
Any other questions? Do you have any?
Steve, you're a little bit more bullish on the state budget than I am. My concern with the state budget is, if my numbers are correct, the safety net programs as part of the state budget now have just hit 47% on their way to 50%. And those are areas that you really cannot cut. You've got to keep people from Rite Aid, I mean, you name it all. But the point is, that's a part of the state budget that can't be cut. So, that's why I'm more concerned about our state budget, because it's leaving less and less that the assembly members and the governor are going to have to attack. So, any thoughts on that world?
I don't disagree with you. I think that the state has taken steps to be able to deal with their operating program with different contract, labor contract issues that they've addressed. I think that the social service component, particularly during hard economic times, is going to be very difficult for them to control without reductions in program for the most needing. And I don't think that that's anybody's intention to do. But the real problem that the state has to address sooner or later is with the revenue stream that they have available, where are those dollars going to go? And, you know, at this point, I think that the municipal programs are easy picking because the reductions really have no impact on the state.
Second part of that question. The state, what they give for state aid to municipalities, at least in the current year, we were $690 million for schools at one point, and apparently that dropped in the current year to $630 million. Do you know what the state aid number is to all the municipalities?
I don't know the state numbers off the top of my head, Jim.
Okay.
Al, did you want to?
Just to get back to your comment, Jim, on the current year deficit, I know the caseload and the DCYF and as far as the medical assistance and whatnot, they're looking at about $30 million deficit over what they had budgeted in the current year. So, you know, as those problems continue, that deficit or that increase in the percentage from the 47% is realistic going to 50.
Yeah, thank you.
I could have told you that if you'd go take a ride with me and go to some of the clinics and see the volume that they're seeing. Polly, I'm sorry, are you a second?
I wanted a comparison for the, when you talk about the surplus we are looking forward for this year, what, say, four years ago, what was the surplus we were carrying over?
How much of a percentage was the state aid, Polly?
No, this is just the surplus, when you talked about the $780,000 surplus.
The surpluses in prior years had been substantially higher.
Substantially higher, double?
What we were doing were, our surpluses were in the 1.2 to 1.4 range, because what we were doing is we were, for all intents and purposes, if we had $1.2 million coming from undesignedated fund balance, we would need a $1.2 million surplus to be able to stand still, to have the same amount of undesignedated funds from one year to the next. Our objective was to build undesignedated fund balance to approximately 15% of the operating budget. So, what we were looking to do is to, we were driving surpluses as hot as we could and cutting off expenses from various departments to be able to turn that surplus. We also have been very conservative, as we always have been, in revenue estimating, so our revenues were exceeding what had been budgeted as an estimated income. But based on the changes, with us having to reduce our margins both on the revenue side and on the expenditure side, we're not going to be able to return those types of surpluses. So, what we'll be doing is declining the undesignedated fund balance until we get to a point where our surpluses are in balance with the amount of revenue that's being used from undesignedated funds for the following year's budget.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the council? From the school committee? Anybody have any questions? Dr. Mega?
Thanks, Steve, for the clarity, if not necessarily the content. I wanted to move back to the healthcare transfer to healthcare reserve. I know you qualified that by that we had three months of data still outstanding. This seems, and perhaps I can ask it, is this more optimistic than where we have been at this time in past years in regards to the 5%? I sort of recall more in the range of 10%.
Well, let's clarify, the 5% is on the municipal side.
Okay.
10% is what's being used on the school side.
Okay.
I'll let Alan give you some greater detail, but the expenses associated on the school side are running at a higher level to what was anticipated than what's happening on the municipal side. Al?
Okay. Tony, as you're aware, last year, which was the first year of the self-insured cost-plus basis, based on the claims that the school department had, you had a 15% increase for the current year. So far, you're tracking, I think, favorably. By that, I mean, you know, you're probably looking at the 10% that is being kicked around for the school budget. I think that, right now, three months into the year, or actually, it's through November 30th, so we do have five months of claims. Things are stable compared to last year, but there are some high exposure claims out there, there's three, that can spike at any time. And to give you an idea, last year, over the 12-month period, claims fluctuated by about $300,000 from the high month to the low month. So, if you get a couple of those high months, obviously, that could throw the numbers out. Also, November is, with the Thanksgiving holiday in there, there's less surgeries done, so the claims historically, November is one of the lower months, as is December with the Christmas holiday. So, we really need to get into January, February before we can really pin it down. I think right now, the 10% looks very good. As I mentioned at the last meeting, we were able to renegotiate the Blue Cross admin fee. That saved about $60,000. And then, the stop-loss insurance, we went out to a bid with the entire pool, and that saved around another 100, that saved around $50,000. So, those savings clearly have helped for the '09, '10 year.
Okay. Any other questions? No, hearing none, I guess we'll move on to the schools' presentation. And Kristin Superintendent Stringfellow will redo the presentation, and welcome. This is her first presentation to the town.
Thank you very much. In the spirit of presenting raw data for people to use to make better decisions, we're going to begin next slide. Am I asking you next slide, or do I have a clicker?
I want total control.
Okay. All right, then.
Actually, what I was going to suggest, Kristin, is that we just change seats.
Okay. Okay. Okay, thank you so much. I'm going to begin with an orientation to the school department data. And this information comes from Infoworks website and a little bit from the inside website. It's available at www.ryeRI.gov, and I'm just giving you a smattering of what's available to the public. We educate about 81% of South Kingstown students in the public schools, with about 3% going to non-public schools, and, I'm sorry, 15% to non-public schools and 3% to charter schools, and less than 1% are homeschooled. We have approximately 87% of students that are not eligible for subsidized lunch, which leaves 13% eligible for either free or reduced lunch programs. Our racial/ethnic background spread is depicted on the left, with 87% of students in South Kingstown public schools depicted as white, 3% African-American, 3% Asian, 3% Hispanic, and 4% Native American. I'm sorry if the shades of blue are not very apparent to you. In terms of our ESL services, we have 96% of youngsters are not receiving ESL services. 4% are receiving, typically at one elementary school, our West Kingston Elementary School. Students receiving special education are depicted on the left-hand side, with 82% as non-recipients and approximately 18% as recipients, with 14% being supported in the general education program with resource-type supports, and 4% in self-contained programs, and less than 1% in the homebound hospitalized program. Our graduation rate is running at about 86%. And let me give a disclaimer to the graduation rate notion. The 14% of students who, I'm sorry, the four-year graduation rate is a Rhode Island Department of Education statistic that does not account for youngsters who need a fifth year to be able to graduate, or who have inmigrated from one school department to another, who have moved. And so sometimes you're not seeing an accurate "I've dropped out of school" reflection in the data. In terms of classifications from the Rhode Island Department of Education, as a district, the South Kingstown School Department has made adequate yearly progress. All middle schools and elementary schools have made AYP, and South Kingstown High School has struggled in two target areas identified in need of improvement. At this time, we have no Regents-Committed schools, and these would be schools who have had a substantial increase over a three-year period. It's very hard in a very high-performing district to continue to run a substantial increase. I provided for the public just a little bit of our Infoworks assessment data. Infoworks tracks math and reading achievement in grades three through eight and grade 11. So as you can see, this graph shows 2006 to 2008 data, measuring third-grade cohort and grade-four cohort. And I wish I had a pointer, but we're continuing. Oh, I did? Okay, nice. Technologically figuring out the pointer. Oh, all right. So if you're going to notice, this first blue band is math, and you're going to see in grade three, I'll give you an example, actually, grade five, because grade five measures math, reading, and writing. So if you're noticing, the first band is in math. In the 2006-'07 year, we increased in the '08 year, and we leveled off a little bit in the '08 year in math. And you'll see the data trend in reading is a continual increase, and in writing, an increase and then a small drop. So although I'm not going to go over each and every achievement data point, it is available for the public on our website. This is the grade 11 data, and this is shown really for two years, an '08 and an '09 data trend, where you're seeing a rise in mathematics, that would be considered a significant rise, and a rise in reading, and a gentle rise in writing. I've listed the math SAT scores, and now we track, we test SATs in the areas of math, reading, and writing. These are our average district scores for 2008 as compared to the state and the nation. And we have about 72% of seniors in South Kingstown High School actually take the SATs, which is significantly larger than the state and the nation. The next two slides, actually, three slides I'm showing you are learning and achievement accountability indicators, because the No Child Left Behind National Act has asked us to have accountability at the elementary level, middle school level, and high school level, based upon target scores that are generated. So in 2008, our elementary math target score was 74.5, and you're noticing here our scores. So we met target scores in all student category, in math and ELA, and in the students with disabilities category, we met it in math, unmet in English Language Arts, because our students at the elementary level achieved 77.9%, and then our target was 84.1%. We didn't have enough, yeah, we also met our target in the economically disadvantaged students in math and ELA at the elementary level. Sometimes, if you're not seeing an indicator, in elementary, we have more than 45 students in each data field, in the all-student category, in the students with disabilities category, and in the economically disadvantaged category. But as we go on, you'll see that that might not be the case. Our participation rate on the kneecap assessments at the elementary level is 99.6. That means almost all students are taking these exams, and our attendance rate is 95.9. You have to meet targets in elementary math, English Language Arts, participation, and attendance in order to be given points, if you will, to make your adequate yearly progress and be considered a high-performing school or a high-performing district. So in a nutshell, middle school data, we met targets in all students math and English Language Arts, students with disabilities in math, unmet in students with disabilities English Language Arts, where our score for students with disabilities at the middle school was 77.7 and versus our target of 78.6. And at the high school, we don't have more than 45 students to be able to measure that are being tested in 11th grade, because this is a kneecap year. So we can only generate all students for this learning and accountability indicator and all students met targets in math and English Language Arts. Then I'm just going to show you a disaggregation key. And within the disaggregation key, RYE develops these labels. They measure gaps in equity between categories, so poverty versus non-poverty as defined by free and reduced lunch status. Then they have a disaggregate indicator for race and ethnicity, gender, and students with disabilities. So these are the acronyms. In our elementary data, we're showing that this is poverty, this is non-poverty, and the state defines an equity gap as 15 percentage points higher or lower. So our poverty equity gap is running between 30% to 33%. One is math, one is English Language Arts. We have an ethnicity equity gap between 28% and 42%. We don't have a gender gap, so boys and girls are performing within 15 points of each other at the elementary level. We have a students with disabilities gap, and that's our largest gap, it's 41% to 44%. So it's showing that these are students without disabilities and these are students with disabilities. Middle school, we're running the same sort of trend. Our equity gaps are showing in the area of poverty to non-poverty, in race and ethnicity, where the only two fields for race and ethnicity that have more than 10% students showing at each tested grade level is white and Native American. We have no equity, gender gap, and we have a large gap between students with disabilities and students without disabilities. And high school follows the same trend. Our poverty gap, you're going to see, is much bigger when kids go to high school. Our ethnicity graph still has two fields, but they're different fields. We have an African-American field and a white field. We still have no gender gap, because boys and girls, as you can see, are performing within the 15% difference. And students with disabilities, this is actually a bar right here, that little tiny one, versus students without disabilities are following the same data trend. We have what's called a district balanced report card that really puts us in a cohort model against three cohort districts in Rhode Island, and those cohorts were changed this year. And when we're looking at the balanced report card, and then the entire balanced report card is available on our school website, but I just want to remind you that the data is focused on three different questions. How are students doing? How well does the district support teaching and learning? And how well is the district managed? There is an accountability subcommittee of the school committee that oversees this data, and the report card is intended to provide clear, understandable information to the community. Our new cohort are South Kingstown, North Kingstown, Charahoe, and Portsmouth, formerly Cumberland. And in looking at this cohort, we ranked number one compared to those other three districts in elementary reading scores all, elementary reading scores IEP, elementary math all, elementary math IEP, middle school reading all, middle school meeting, middle school math all, high school math all, and in a distinguished performance category of level four. So kneecaps are given on a four-point rubric, four being distinguished, three being meeting proficiency, two partial proficiency, and one being below proficient. So we do, we're ranked number one among the, all four cohorts as deriving of four on the kneecap district-wide. And how does this impact the 2011 budget? We believe that we'll be facing perhaps a mid-year aid reduction in state aid. November statement that we have projects a $633,000 surplus. We've already seen a positive turnover allowance due to early retirements of some of our staff. Every year, we continue, monthly, we continue to review all open positions, and right now we have a NESDEC facility study in process that's winding down. We have certain expenditure assumptions, several that we have ascertained from conversations, I almost pointed at you with the pointer, John, between John Rashat and the town, and some that we were able to garner from our last meeting with the town council. So we are currently involved in the last year of our collective bargaining agreements, one more year expiring in 2011, and they bring with them certain budgetary salary assumptions. We're projecting level staffing, $500,000 in turnover allowance, which is something that has been historically done here. We are typically have allowed a 3% increase in materials allowances, which we call P accounts. And this year, we've told the principals that that will be a flat rate, so zero increases in materials for the schools. We're projecting an insurance and utilities increase by 5%. And as was alluded to earlier, a healthcare increase by 10% because that's what our claims are starting to stabilize at. We are taking a look at adjustments in rates for outside tuitions. We're seeing certain trends in our special education students coming back into district, that we're sending less students to the Charahoe Vocational Center than we did previously, and that our charter school enrollment is declining, as you'll see in later slides. And we did already complete our capital plan and forwarded it to the town at a level funding. In terms of our revenue assumptions, our state aid, our budget, budget assumption for state aid is a 3% reduction. We have verified that information as best as we can up till today, checking in with Carolyn Diaz at RYE to see if that will be a very conservative reduction. We had been told at the last town council, school department meeting, that our local revenue projection assumption would be a 2% increase, but certainly heard this evening that you would prefer that to be level funding. Our undesignated funds, we're looking at $391,000 to be put into operations, which is 25% of the fund balance applied as revenue, where previously we applied 33%, one-third. Our pension rate is decreasing, as was alluded to, through the municipal side as well. It's a decrease in certified and non-certified contribution rate. Certified pension rate was 14.17% and is now 11.89. Non-certified was 6.92 and is now showing as 6.2. But unfortunately, the impact of this savings was offset by a reduction in state aid. So these aren't savings we actually realize. This table shows a pension trend, and if you notice in the certified column, that we peaked in 2008, 2009, contributing the most to certified pensions, and now it's on a downward trend, and non-certified pensions as well. This graph shows certified versus non-certified, and it watches the growth, the peak, and the downward trend. This is a table that shows the district FTEs, full-time equivalent status, in terms of total administrators, certified staff, non-certified staff, and total. So for this year, we have dropped in administrators by one FTE. That was the reduction of the middle school assistant principal at Broad Rock. Total certified staff went from 366.8 to 350.8, total non-certified from 201.3 to 195.8, which dropped our total FTEs from 589.6 to 567.1. And I'm so sorry that the graph is sort of hard to read, it looks a lot clearer from my perspective, but right here is our total, and you can see that we've just continued a downward trend in the total, in administrators, where the base is not large to begin with, so it's harder to show the exact curve, where certified and non-certified, everybody's going down. Here are our charter school enrollments, which peaked in 2006 and are now the lowest that we've seen since the charter school movement began. We are at 101 youngsters leaving public schools to attend charter school. A big impact right here, you're showing, is the all-day kindergarten. And this is the charter school graph. In terms of our undesignated fund balance, undesignated funds in June of 2009, we're at $1,938,645. One-third applied to the operating budget brought us down to an undesignated anticipated fund balance in June of 2010 at $1,564,045. If we apply $391,000 to 10, 11 operations, which is expected, then this will be our anticipated undesignated fund balance that will remain. This is our capital information, the school fund. In technology, we're anticipating $200,000 worth of projects, and district projects $20,000 for a total capital of $220,000. The next table is a state aid trend, and you're watching the state aid really go down significantly since 2007, and this is when the Piva weed tax cap also hit, as was alluded to. So we've been hit by not being able to increase, get revenues in state aid and not be able to increase the property tax rate, the levy rate. So we're anticipating the difference between 2010, 2011, which again is a projection, and we're projecting and assuming a 3% decrease over last year, or $9,450,000. The last two slides are built upon slides that you've seen in the past. So this shows South Kingstown versus the other cohorts versus Rhode Island, and how we spend money. The blue is South Kingstown, the purple is the cohort, and here's Rhode Island. So we spend most of our money on instruction and support. We spend very little on operations, leadership, and other commitments compared to our cohort and compared to Rhode Island. And this is the spending distribution by function, another slide that I revamped from last year. And so in terms of, again, South Kingstown, other cohorts, and Rhode Island, our funding for the general education students versus our funding for the special education students, and then... and then other, which could be ESL students, it could be economically disadvantaged program. And that concludes my PowerPoint this evening.
Any questions for Dr. Stringfield? Want to switch? Are you happy where you are?
Go ahead, Kevin.
Just, well, Kevin's got a question, why don't we all state? Just the state aid slide, the third one in. The 9.45, does that include the ARIF funds the state got, and then just kind of backed it in?
Yes, this is state and federal.
So in reality, that's short another million and a half, I think?
There's a little over a half million dollars of ARIF funds included in that number.
In that year, but with total years, it's like, it's going to be like 1 point?
Over the total years?
Three years.
Last year was a little over 600,000, 500,000, and a decrease in the 10-11 budget.
So to keep those trends, the state would have to put that money back in in 2012 when the ARIF funds expire.
Right.
Correct?
Any other questions? Ella?
Dr. Stringfield, I know this is early in the budget season, but the pay-as-you-go capital, the technology for 200,000, could you elaborate a little more on that, please?
We, there's a combination of things in there. Replacement computers, we have a rotational replacement on our computers. There's a number of switches and controlling pieces that would be replaced and updated in the buildings. And there would be some of the IP phone work would be in there.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Any questions from the council? Steve, do you look like you have sensitive? Oh, I'm sorry, Alan.
Just one thing on the undesignated funds. The 374,600 is really on top of that first line, so your undesignated funds that are anticipated as a 610 should really be 1,937,000. So you've got an increase there of around 375,000. So that's a positive as far as you'll have more fund balance to work with.
That's good news.
First good news of the night.
That's right.
Wow, thanks a lot, Alan.
Keep it coming.
Unless there's a reduction in the transfer for 9-10 year.
Right, but there's still a projected surplus for the 9-10 year. What are you at, John, 633?
633.
And that's not included in the 1.9 million?
That's great.
Any other questions from anybody else? No? All right, Steve, if you want to change places back, and then all we'll do is we'll ask anybody from the audience if they'd like to come forward, and if they've heard a lot of data here, if they have any questions. Certainly, this is a public hearing for, to get the views and the comments related to them, the public. So if you'd like, you can please come forward and state your name at the microphone for Nobody? Okay. Oh, go ahead.
I'm waiting for John.
No. You're a citizen, you can come up.
Paul Jordan, High Street in Lakefield. Couple of questions. I've been watching these things for a few years now, and I always notice that Steve's budgets are extremely detailed about every single dollar. And I'm glad, Ella, you asked a question about the technology transfer, or the technology budget, because I was curious about that, too. I think, you know, this is going to be one of those years with hard choices. And having a lot of detail about specific programs, you know, what's what, what it does, I remember a couple of years ago, being sort of new and hearing about CARES and, I don't know, there was something else. Some of those programs, they were never really explained, it was just sort of the acronym. And I think having that kind of detail, at least for me, would be really helpful, just to know, because I suspect that things are going to be tough. Just an observation, and then a question. You know, I got involved way back when, when South Road School was closed, and then we had the redistricting, and then this year with Broad Rock. And from my own experience, and my own daughter, and I know it's different for other kids, and I'd heard people say this, particularly, school staff saying, you know, kids are pretty resilient. And I think what I've seen from, with my daughter and her friends, is that they have been very resilient. The things haven't really, at least with her and her friends, I haven't seen an impact. And I'm curious if any tracking was done with the South Road children, you know, seeing that that school was closed, and they were sort of, everyone assumed they were going to see this big impact, if there were any numbers to say, look, these kids actually did pretty well, and not just in terms of test scores, but whatever other, you know, metrics you're seeing in terms of socialization and whatnot. Given that there was some discussion, or has been some discussion, about potentially closing a school, and I don't know if that's, you know, realistic this year or not. And the last thing I wanted to mention, there's been a lot said about Nezdek from sort of a couple of different directions. Obviously, there were a lot of people at that meeting, but very few sort of, you know, non-professionals, or I think there were three or four members of the public there that night. I thought that what Nezdek was presenting, and I hope someone will tell me that I'm maybe wrong, but they were showing us sort of the perfect system for South Kingstown, some things that we could do that would make the schools the best that they could be. And my overall impression was that there was very little. I mean, obviously, those space issues, I thought the issues of the psychologist and sociologist and social workers having to share space and not have privacy with kids was pretty big. But, you know, the stained ceiling tiles, the rusty lockers, I haven't been in a public or private building yet that didn't have issues. And I sort of looked at that presentation, and thought, boy, we're really doing pretty well. And so, you know, on one side, I'm hearing this, all this sort of noise about, gee, we really need to do something, and the other side, oh, here's this big threat that, you know, Nezdek is saying we need to spend a lot of money. I didn't think they were saying that. I thought they were saying, we should have a conversation about it, and obviously, we are. But it seemed like there was very little there, and I don't know if that's the, how you folks are reading it or not, but I thought they were saying we were in pretty good shape.
I agree with you. I think in terms of your question about South Road School and any tracking data, I don't know of any tracking data. But I've certainly, if there is, if you leave me your email address when you leave, I'll research it further, and I'll find out for you.
Just be curious if people, yeah, if people had a gut feeling about it. Because I mean, that was the concern, that those kids were...
I think that overall, you're seeing in the last five years, an upward trend in elementary and middle school.
They're doing pretty well.
Achievement scores, so I think they're doing pretty well. I think the qualitative feedback from teachers and parents that I've spoken to in my brief career here has been a very positive change.
Yeah, I think what I'd seen was that the schools were doing, they were making a real effort. When South Road was closed, when the redistricting, the schools were making a real effort with the ice cream socials, the PTAs, and the principals were doing a lot to get kids involved, to make sure that they were making new friends.
And I think that that continued.
And it's helped.
With Broad Rock to Curtis Corner reconfiguration. I think that families and principals and teachers have gone above and beyond to make student transition a priority. In terms of the Nezdek study, they have not given us a final report yet. What they showed you was sort of a reality check, given the data that they had collected, and an opportunity for the community to weigh in and to urge them to collect more data in certain areas, which they have been doing, hence the reason they're not done with the final report yet. But I think that what they showed you at the, at first glance, is the fact that this is a district that has had a great deal of change, and that there was a school already closed, there was some moving, there was some reconfiguration of middle schools. And so I agree with your statement that there, they weren't projecting any large efficiencies that we could make in order to keep our program still high performing. I mean, certainly, when they did their, their facilities look, and as they continue to do it, they're looking also to compare us to light cohorts in Rhode Island and outside of Rhode Island. They're using some Connecticut schools that are already being labeled with very specific quantitative indicators on what makes a high-performing district, and we would like to stay a high-performing district.
Agreed. Thank you.
Paul, if I could, I'm very close to the South Road School. My children were in kindergarten in first grade.
Right, right.
When the, when South Road School closed, they went to South Road School for kindergarten in first grade, my son and my daughter, and then transitioned to West Kingstown, and now my son has transitioned this year to Broad Rock. And I don't think there's any data. I remember asking back then, and I don't think you could do that. But I, being very close to a lot of those kids in the communities, I would say they were very resilient, and I haven't seen anything.
Sure, and you had gotten involved at the same time.
Pretty much close to that. And I know Mr. Angeli also, his kids are in a similar scenario, and his wife's in the PTA, so I would agree with your assessment, and Broad Rock also this year.
Yeah, I guess just the point is, in terms of the things that, you know, obviously, you're going to have to make some tough decisions this year, we've been down this road before, and frequently, the argument comes up that, well, the kids are really going to suffer, and maybe, you know, if you've got to cut back on programs, yeah, there is going to be a problem, but if it's, you know, if it's a school building, maybe that argument doesn't really hold as much as we thought it did, so.
I'll add to that, I have an N of one in that.
Right, right.
And has done perfectly well. Wouldn't buy a sweatshirt from West Kingston because she had her South Road. That's about the biggest tragedy that I saw, or the biggest, you know, rebellion to it, but made a lot more friends, even with the transition with the Broad Rock School coming to Curtis Corner this year.
Right, just sort of broadened the horizons.
A lot of that, us and them, over the summertime, they get to school, I think day two, she had more friends from Broad Rock Middle Schools. So the kids are resilient.
Paul, I just wanted to address that, and thank you for the feedback, especially about bringing more detail to the table. We will have school committee budget work sessions, where we do have more of that line item detail, although I'm going to make a note of that for next time. But I know time is at a premium for everyone, so, you know, even if you can't attend, we'll get that up on the website, and we'll take feedback.
Right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Please come forward. Please state your name for the record.
Hi, I'm Bob Trecker. Let me just first state that I've been to a number of school committee meetings, not so far this school year, and I have nothing but commendable things to say about the people on the school committee. I truly believe they have the children's best interests in heart, as I think we all should. I think a certain member on the school, on the town council has been much maligned as a, perhaps a child disliker, if you will. But I will, I don't have any numbers to give you, because I'm getting a little fed up with numbers, because you can kind of twist them any way you want. There's numbers up there that weren't shown tonight, like how much you spend per kid, what the teacher-to-student ratio is. South Kingstown does have a very high teacher-to-student ratio, the number of teachers per hundred kids. And that's not a number you can pull right off the insight website. What you have to do is actually go in and manually count how many teachers. They did have the total number of teachers, I don't know where she pulled that number from, but that's from internal documents, that's not right on the website. But if you compare that to other school districts like Barrington or North Kingstown, any other school district, we're pretty high. So when a certain member of the town council suggests that we're maybe slightly overstaffed, I think that's something to look at, at least as far as comparing to our cohorts, if you want to call them cohorts. I don't know what constitutes a cohort. Do they have the same socioeconomic status as South Kingstown residents?
I think it was a performance-based, it was, cohort was designed before my tenure here, but I think it was mainly performance-based.
But, I mean, as a taxpayer, my only real complaint about the whole system is the reliance on the property tax, which everyone sort of agrees that that's a poor way of funding, because it does not take into account an ability to pay. My prime example that I give anyone in an argument is, you can take two people, two families, same number of kids, same income level. One guy buys a small house, but it's on a, near waterfront area, and it's taxed to the hilt. The other family lives across the street, and they pay maybe 60% of the taxes, they're using the same amount of services, they have enough money to go on vacation, but yet they, you know, the other family is living vicariously, not vicariously, you know, very frugally to have that little waterfront property. So I'm, I just don't like that system, and that's not anything the council, I guess, can do anything about today, or in the very near future, the state has to wrestle with that issue. But the Nezdek report, I did not go to that meeting, but I did read the minutes of it. And I have to admit, I was flabbergasted when they suggested reopening South Road School. My 11-year-old son, who's at Broad Rock, at dinner tonight, so I was a little late coming here, he said, so what are you going to say if you say anything? I said, well, you know, they're talking about opening up South Road School. He's like, what? Are they crazy? We don't even have any kids at Broad Rock. They have two, two science labs, they only use one, I mean, the building's only half used. So even my 12-year-old can do simple math. And I, and I know that's simplifying it a lot, but when you look at a brand-new building like that, that is under half utilization, and you have a report, now, I really thought they were going to come up with some savings. The fact that they came up with possible expansion, I don't know what kind of mindset, I hope, that's not what you were looking for, I hope.
You know, Bob, I don't think that ends up being their report, and so I think it was a, and so what has been valuable is that they took the time to give their data and some of their viewpoints as they, as they saw issues in regards to education. Then you can bring feedback back to them in regards to that initial view, and then they come out with a final report. However, then that gets discussed at the school committee table and with the community. And so I think there's, there's a lot of the game left to play. I mean, I think we really are at the onset of this analysis. And so I wouldn't consider this their report. This was their, their draft presenting of data and suggestions, getting feedback, then they will generate a report. I, you know, we are not yet recipients of that report.
I know, it was only a preliminary report, but to me, it was, it was a sign of going in the wrong direction. You know, I mean, I don't think I've ever talked to a teacher, I mean, this, we're talking about education, because let's face it, it is 79% of the taxes we're paying, and I want my kids to get a good education, and I don't doubt, I know South Kingstown is a good school system. Is it because of every single dollar we spend, or is it because of, as a community, we have good, hard-working families here that raise their kids right? I mean, face it, if you took our kids from the South Kingstown school district and transplanted them to another school district, say in Providence, for example, you took those Providence kids and you transplanted them down here and spent equal amounts of money, transferred the budgets, the kids down here, you moved all those families up there, they would do better there, and those other kids that aren't doing as well, wouldn't do well down here. So the monetary issue of dollars per kid and increasing the school budget, I don't believe, I just don't believe we can look at increasing taxes this year. I think the goal is to stay level funded. If that is the goal, I'm a supporter of everything you're doing. But if the goal is to increase funding for schools this year with a continually declining enrollment, and the possibility of consolidating buildings and reducing staff and still maintaining a good education, I'm opposed. And I'm just making my voice clear right now at the outset. Thank you.
May I just ask a question regarding the South Road Schools? By understanding, when I went to the meeting, was that some of the, what they were looking at was also using that facility for the Head Start program as a rental type of a... Revenue. Revenue, a revenue source, not as a, opening as a full school. So with an alternative high school program, drawing in revenue is their assumption. Okay. And again, these are just assumptions and just ideas in a rough draft formation, but again, I just feel like, you know, you need to get more information out there.
I think also, we've been encouraged in the past to sort of think out of the box, come up with different ideas in regards to revenue streams. This is the process, this is the beginning of the process. Not every initial idea is then gravitated to and endorsed, and then there's certain, there are modifications made with different ideas. But the idea is, the concept here is to think and to, and try to look at different ways in which we can not only enhance revenues, but also improve educational outcomes, and what we ultimately get measured on is student achievement.
Very good point, Tony. Yep, thank you. Okay. Anybody else? Please come forward and state your name for the record.
I'm new to all this.
Well, you can just...
I'm kind of new to all this.
Don't be nervous.
I'm learning every day.
Okay, good enough, but could you tell us your name for us?
So if I, tell me if something's out of line.
Well, first start with your name.
I want to know what cohort means, too.
Okay.
I just don't understand what that...
Okay, well, you can ask again if you'd like, but...
I do. Um, and...
Can I just get your name? Your name for the, name for the record.
My name's Rex Chamberlain.
Thank you. Please continue, Mr. Chamberlain.
And I have an 11-year-old at Broad Rock.
All right, all right. Thank you.
And she should be here, actually. I, she's doing her homework.
Oh, good. We want to increase those test laws, so I'm glad to hear that.
Well, she, she has a couple of ideas for you all.
Okay. Well, she can come. We have more meetings, believe me.
She'll be here, believe me.
Okay.
Um, I, I see a lot of income in your residential numbers. You're, that's where you're getting most of your income from?
That's correct.
And I don't understand why you, and I'm, I'm, you can probably tell by my accent I'm not from around here. I don't understand why you don't have more commercial and more industrial.
Zoning establishes what the land use is that's allowed in the community. And this community has established how much commercial is available. It's been a decision of the town over the past probably 40 or 50 years to maintain property in a residential classification. That's part of the town's comprehensive community plan. Because there is so much property zoned for residential purposes, you're going to see most of the property taxes derived from a residential tax base.
If, if for some reason we can increase the commercial and industrial, it would relieve the burden of the residential and get more money coming in?
Hypothetically, yes. The question would be if you were to increase commercial properties and their availability, one, would they be developed? Is there a market for additional commercial in this area? And two, what capital facility expansions would be necessary to be able to service that, that land use? Would the sewers be adequate? Would the water be adequate? Would traffic be adequate? Or would there be outlays for redevelopment of an area for other than a residential purpose? I think it would be very difficult in this community based on the build-out that's occurred to date. There are not any areas, large areas that are going to be available for rezoning for a commercial or an industrial activity where there is not already residential development within close proximity. So I think that, that the tax base that we have now is something that's going to be relatively stable. I don't think that there'll be major changes possible with that.
In other words, if you, you can't make or have some sort of manufacturing plant down here?
There are few areas where manufacturing facilities could be located. There are plant spaces available for industrial right now that are unoccupied.
Okay. Well, I don't know, I think it's 10,000 components to a windmill, something of that nature. And the components can be manufactured here? Is that, is that true?
Any number of things could come into the community and they would be assisting the tax base. But what I'm saying to you is, is that right now, what I've presented to you is what the tax base is.
Okay.
And what I'm saying to you is, is that if there were decisions made by the community at large to be able to rezone large tracts of land for other than residential purposes, one, they would have to locate them. Two, they would have to have public support. And three, if in fact that decision were made, they would then have to be willing buyers to come in and to develop those facilities.
Okay.
That would, would take a multi-year period before you would see the fruits of that labor.
And that would be under commercial or industrial?
That's correct. It would, if the rezoning occurred and if it was used for those purposes, it would be rezoned for that purpose and it would be reclassified for tax purposes as well.
And it takes two, two years to do that?
What I'm saying to you is, sir, is that it's a multi-stepped process
Right.
To change zoning.
Right. And we can do it in a year to bring?
You could, you could change the zoning in a year.
Okay.
But at the same time, it may take you several years to be able to provide the infrastructure improvements for an area if you were going to be looking at heavy industrial or commercial activities. If, if the town decided and the council approved changing of zoning for an area that was going to be used for industrial or commercial purposes, they could do that. They would also have to determine what infrastructure expansions would be needed for capital, capital costs. Once those capital facilities were installed, then they would have to be willing buyers to come in and buy that property and be able to develop those industrial or commercial operations. What I'm suggesting to you is that it would take several years before that process could play out, before you would see any type of new taxable property from that commercial expansion.
Okay, I understand all that. Is there any way to speed up that process?
There would have to be willing property owners to come forward and to propose those type of properties. And the community at large would have to evaluate whether they thought that was an appropriate land use.
Okay. Let's say, let's assume that all that's being done. And we could increase this number so it would, it wouldn't increase our taxes?
No.
Our property taxes?
No, that
It would take another year or two?
It would take a number of years before there would be any, any change. The town established, South County Commons was a special management district that was established several years ago. It was residential property that was reclassified. The property has been built out over an eight to a 10-year period. It has developed a great deal of property tax payments for the community itself. But again, using that as a case in point, you're talking about an eight to a 10-year period for, to be able to realize substantial gains from that type of a reclassification and reuse of property. In addition, you would have to find another landmass that would be capable of supporting that type of activity.
Well, we're not talking about a lot of land, maybe an acre or two, to build a manufacturing plant for a chip.
I, I think I've answered your question as best I can.
That's fine. Yes, you have. All right. That's all. Well, I, I have more questions, but it would take longer. I'll see somebody afterwards. Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. Again, anybody else who'd like to come forward? Please, please come forward and state your name for the record.
Mike Maron. When we started on this new budget process, we talked about tonight's meeting being, taking the 50,000-foot view to not just look at the dot line items and dollars, but to have a discussion about where we're going. Keeping up with the newspapers, I came here expecting the news not to be great with the numbers that are available. But was surprised to hear Steve make it worse or sound
It's not Steve himself.
No, no, not Steve. No. I apologize if it came out that way. I just meant reporting that the news is worse than I thought it was.
He's very sensitive sometimes, you know.
Pardon?
He's very, he can be very sensitive.
Okay. I apologize, Steve. Is it fair to say that the, the news is the state's telling us you're on your own?
All I've suggested to you is that my opinion and that of my finance director is that some of the estimates may be more than optimistic.
Yeah. And, and that was the part that surprised me because I rely on your opinion and value it highly. And if you think it's optimistic, it probably is. But if it is optimistic, it seems to me that the school committee and the town council, in, in addition to having to focus on the line items for this year's budget, also need to start addressing more general subjects for dealing with the budget over a series of years. When we had the, the legislators forum last week, a couple of topics that came up that I'd like to hear from anybody that wants to take a crack at it. One of the legislators mentioned that the school funding proposals that were put forward by the Providence legislators would result in a loss to South Kingston of something like $5.5 million. That's, you got that right?
Yes.
And the obvious question is, how does the town deal with that if something like that comes to fruition? And then the second topic that was discussed was that the legislature has a couple of committees right now looking into the issues of either regionalization or centralization of government services, whether it's education or otherwise. And I wonder what the town council's discussions have been, if any, to this point on those subjects, as well as the school committee.
Well, in that regard, I have to say, in speaking as the municipal side, and I think the school committee, I think Kevin wants to address that. I think Kevin said he went to a meeting regarding this recently. But as far as, Mike left the mic, but as far as the, the town of South Kingston, there is a lot of things that the town already does as far as sharing.
Certain items is there's no low-hanging fruit to capture that. In addition to that, then they did look at or are looking at expanding it. And there's a whole list of laundry items that we're working on. I'm going to work with John on and see if we can get a list of some of the things maybe we can share. We are talking more about shared services. You know, the ultimate nexus, you know, what I call it, soundbite solutions or soundbout radio, is everybody talks about regionalization, thinking, why do we have 30-something districts and everything else? It's really a governance issue in the state of Rhode Island. Our system of government has our school committee reporting to the town council when it comes to revenues. So if you went to a different system where you did, people talk about different parts of the country where they have school districts the size of Rhode Island, those school boards almost always have taxing authority. They're not part of a town, they're part of a, of a taxing authority. So what ends up happening is they're setting their own tax rates. And that is not the system of government that Rhode Island has. I'm not saying we can't do that. And, you know, I'm just saying it's, it's a governance issue to this part of it too. So what this particular subcommittee is looking at is the more, you know, we already share, for example, the Chartwells. We serve, share a manager when it comes to our food services. You know, can we expand on that? We talked about doing a statewide purchasing agreement where all the schools combine together and buy school books, for example. So those are some of the things that came up on Saturday. Honestly, I haven't even put the reports together. You're hearing things before, Tony and Kristen, but we are, we're trying.
Can I add a little piece to that?
Kristen, go ahead.
So we already consolidate our food, food service program with, with Chartwells, with the Town of Narragansett School Department. We participate in the statewide transportation for private school students and special needs youngsters who are out of district. The Narragansett School Department transports some of our students that are attending westerly in smaller cohorts than would be eligible for the statewide transportation. We do participate in statewide purchasing. It's through WB Mason Program. It's not for textbooks, but it is for supplies. We participate with the town and other school departments and towns in West Bay Health for our, our health insurance. We have, we participate with Serico, with all the Southern Rhode Island school departments to purchase professional development and sometimes supplies like our science kits. And we do a lot of consolidation of services with the town, much more than I had known in the other two school departments that I had worked with.
Okay, thank you. Jim?
Mike, I've had a chance the, over the last month to speak with a couple of reps and one senator from the urban areas. And just to speak to the statewide education funding formula act, which we're either going to see in this next session or certainly the following session. The first brush last year, and Steve alluded to earlier, we're considered a wealthier community. You can look at all the indices to prove that. They were going to take our entire $10 million away from us. Matter of fact, about $110 million from 10 or 11 cities and towns in the state. That was the first brush. There's another group of reps who say we should be held harmless, keep us South Kingston at their $10 million and those other communities. But all new taxes, all new redistribution of education dollars will go to those 29 other cities and towns. Recently, there's been another group talking about must be some midway between all this. And that's maybe the number you heard recently. The reps I've talked to would have a formula or an index where we would still lose three or four million dollars from our state aid, as well as some of those other nine to 10 communities. I think Steve can back me up on this. The $110 million, when the committee first met last year, which we all pounced on and said, hey, you know, let's not go in that direction till the General Assembly. But the problem is taking $110 million away, for them to equalize on a per-student basis, which is how this has to be measured, we're looking at $500 to $700 million to catch up those other 29 communities with South Kingston's group of 10. So choose your poison in there, but it's coming at us. Thank you.
Okay. Alan?
Just like to add to the list of the shared services, also the transportation that we do with Narragansett. There's the elderly daycare program that we do with Narragansett and our Kingston. There's the same incentive we do with Narragansett. There's also field use and gym use that we share with Crowe on an annual basis. In addition to that, we belong to the insurance squad where we purchase the general liability workers'
Trust.
Insurance. That's all through Rhode Island, you know, local trust, which there's quite a few cities and towns that belong to that. There's West Bay Collaborative as far as the healthcare. We have 800 live employees that are between town and school. That group is $9,000. So we have, I mentioned earlier, the savings that we were able to negotiate with Blue Cross, non-stop loss insurance. Those were deals we wouldn't have been able to get if we were on our own. So we are looking at those things. There's also electric through the local cities and towns. We have, we go in with all the other cities as far as purchasing electricity. That's five years, I believe, right?
Three, three years.
It was five years.
I got that.
We just, as a member first, joined a natural gas as far as some of the buildings that are heavy uses of natural gas. That's again, the state did price. So we really have built into those things, and I think we're taking full advantage of the areas we'll be in the state.
We also do tax bills on behalf of the Union Fire District and Kingston District so that we receive, so that we can save them costs as far as those types of billings. We do joint services with the school department as far as appropriations accounting, accounts payable. So there's a number of those things. I think we will be looked at when that committee gets started or finishes, as far as being a mentor to other communities on what shared services could be. Water Department, we share, we provide the ability for water transmission to Narragansett through the Middle Bridge Water System. They provide us with, with the ability to bring wastewater through Narragansett to the wastewater treatment plant. We provide police services for Jerusalem. All of those different things are activities that, over the years, if we saw an opportunity with another community that we could save money and at the same time provide services, we've taken the steps. So will we continue to do that? We will. But I think some of the concerns that, that we have at this point is that when the state begins to tell municipalities what they should be doing, rather than doing the fiscal impact statement first to determine whether that's a viable opportunity, it raises some concerns. We think that we should be studying the issues with the other communities for, for new opportunities, but it should not be a mandate coming down from the state.
Okay. Hope that answered Mike's questions to a certain extent. So we're, all right, and we're at 50,000, Mike, but as we keep going on, it's a process and we get closer and closer. Is there any other questions?
Cap, can I have one? Oh, Ella? I'm sorry. Go ahead.
My thoughts are three-pronged here as the, we move forward putting the budget together. First of all, I'd like to support the notion of more detail from the school committee. I think that would be very helpful, especially in this economic time. The more information out there for the public, I think that you would probably get more support for your budget. So I appreciate that. So the first one is, with the disaggregation represented tonight with the 15% equity gaps with children with disabilities, ethnicity, and poverty, if more detail can be placed, even if it's in a narrative, you know, not in a line item, specific programs, not necessarily, I know we can't do an increase in programs, but things that are happening. And I don't think that the school committee has ever done that with the level of detail how we can educate all of our kids. how we can educate all of our kids. So I think that may be a wise suggestion to rally some support for the budget. The second is to maybe elaborate a little bit on the stimulus funds. Um, I know that, I think there is an East Bay Collaborative program to do some supports in the math, and I'm not sure if that stimulus funds, but I think it would be helpful for the community to be aware of how the school committee is spending some money, using that stimulus money to improve education for children. And then the last is, a lot of times, the schools, the schools are doing things that don't cost any money, and a lot of times go unrecognized. And sometimes, a supplemental narrative of all of those things happening in the schools that are not costing the extra money to improve the education for children will also rally some support for, for the school department budget. And Steve, if you wanna take any of those points that we can rally support for our town budget, you know, the municipal side, but just some points to carry. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ella. Anybody else? Uh, Jim?
I had a question, I'm not sure if it's for the superintendent or John. I don't know if you, uh, measure costs by program, is there any way to pull out a number for me on your total sports program, middle, high school, everything from salary costs, equipment, transportation? Um, do you have those broken down? If you don't now, but if you could...
I don't have it today, but we can do give that to you.
That would be fine, thank you.
Go ahead, John. Okay, thank you, Jim.
I was just gonna say that we do have it, um, in two pieces. One, we have a coaching line that's in our salaries, and then we have a total sports line that takes in everything from supplies to sports officials who, who officiate the games. So we could, we could pull that together in...
Just a gross number, I'm sorry. Thank you, thank you, John.
Uh, there is transportation in there, too.
Okay.
So can you email that to me? Can I just add to that, Jim? Um, if Jim's requesting that information, and as far as the legalities that may go along with some of that, such as, um, transportation to sporting events, and the guidelines and parameters that school districts also need to, to follow?
I thought that would have been part of the budget. I was only simply asking, part of the budget, what is the, uh, the sports, uh, program aspect of it? I wasn't looking for any personal...
No, but I mean, if you're, if you're gathering information, like on sports, transportation, whatever, I want the public to be well-aware of all of the parameters also that go along with that. Thank you.
There's always a legal aspect to it.
Yeah.
All right, uh, again, any other questions from anybody else in the council, school committee? No? Tony?
Again, I wanna be sensitive to, to individuals' times, but, um, tomorrow night, our school committee meeting will be our annual meeting with the, uh, state legislators. I, I know that the, uh, the concern about what a statewide, uh, fu, funding formula will mean, uh, for South Kingston, uh, if enacted, uh, will be a part of what we hope to discuss tomorrow night.
Thank you for telling us and reminding us about that, Tony. Any other questions from anybody else? No? Okay, well, again, thank you, everybody, for coming. It's the beginning of the process. It's a long process, but, um, I think that we've laid out the numbers on the table here, and it, obviously, it's, it's not a good year, has, it hasn't been in the past, and we're gonna have to work together, um, in the school committee and the town council side, so I appreciate everybody coming tonight. And, uh, have a good night, and this meeting is over, and it is nine-twenty-two.